Okay, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. He citizens to be heard on anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Review FM Metropolitan Government Council of Governments Articles of Association and Fiscal Agreement. Bill Christian. Come on up, Bill.
Good morning.
Morning.
Greg. I think in your packet you have a copy of a slide presentation. If not, I'll just battle on anyway, so. The big question is, why is Bill here today? Well, Bill is here today to discuss with you amendments to our Articles of Association and a related separate fiscal agreement. Staffs in the process of updating all of our organizational documents, our personnel policies, administrative policies, our 3C agreement with the states and the transit agencies, but also our articles. And in a review of that, we found we didn't really have a organized, dedicated fiscal agreement with our jurisdictions to collect the dues that we ask of you each year. So to that end, I'm going to skip through most of the policy and administrative, just to be assured that we're addressing those issues. Councilman Gross, I'm sure, has read through them two or three times by now, and he's still awake, so that's a testament that he has good stamina. But we are updating those. A caveat to our 3C agreement, it is ready to be distributed to our planning partners. Federal Highway, however, has asked that we hold that back until some news comes about on MAP 21, the new transportation legislation, to make sure there's no massive changes in there that we have to address in that agreement. So that will be approved whenever Federal Highway says we can take it out for review and then a couple of months after that. The personnel policies and administrative policies should be done by the end of the summer. They're somewhat contingent on approval of the amendments to the Articles of Association, so once that is done, the rest should follow rather quickly. As a brief definition, the Articles is more or less our charter. It enabled us to become an organization. Since it is kind of the keystone document for the agency, amendments to that document should probably be as minimal as possible. But in the past, we have used that to amend basically everything. The last amendments have been to include associate members to our policy board. That's not necessarily the function of this document, so we looked at it and decided it was a good time to update it, not only to reflect the fact that we're missing a few key things in the document, but also to the fact that we want to make it that standalone document. And we split out from it several things that are amended quite often, but then we can take care of with board action and not necessarily the full-blown review of the Articles. When and if we become a transportation management area, that is when we become over 200,000 population, we have more Federal Highway restrictions. And one of them is the Articles. To actually get those approved or any changes to approved, it's not just an action of the policy board, but Federal Highway has to approve those changes as well. So at this point, the more we can split out and give authority to the policy board to change, the better. Hopefully, when we're said and done, the Articles won't be changed until that time when we actually have to redesignate the MPO. Most of the changes and amendments reflect the fact that we split out a lot of the policy board actions and authority into a separate set of bylaws. That would just take a vote of the policy board to change. It's just procedural things, what time we meet, what day we meet, responsibilities of the chair. We also separated, as I said, a fiscal agreement. There was nothing in the current Articles that really gave us any authority to collect money from you as far as dues. But for the most part, I left intact most of the original language of the Articles. I just added to it. On page seven of the attachment, there's a small organization administrative chart. It just breaks out.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And Bill, they did not get that slide presentation?
They did not get this?
I don't believe so. They have the Articles in front of them, and they also have the fiscal agreement. That's the two items, but we did not receive the PowerPoint presentation. So if you're going to refer to the pages, they are going to be hunting and they won't find them.
Okay. No, actually, I will pass this around. It's just a very light graphic, breaking out the administrative and management documents that we have. It does point out that we split the Articles of Association out into the Articles, a set of bylaws, into a separate fiscal agreement. The governor's designation for the Metropolitan Planning Organization is included with that. On the bylaws, we did separate the policy, and it would probably be beneficial to us to separate or to at least develop bylaws for our technical committee as well. Those would be pretty much modeled after the policy board, but just taking into consideration some of the lesser responsibilities of the technical committee. Some of the major amendments we did have, on page one, at least I can reference that for you, we did add a purpose statement to the document. We did not have that before. It has been suggesting that we change that to a basic mission statement, so I'm still waiting additional information from the policy board member who suggested that. There was no intention of us as being a legal entity. The MetroCog Policy Board, by law and definition, is a legal entity. They hire an executive director and staff to do the day-to-day operations, but it is the policy board that is officially the cog in the Metropolitan Planning Organization. They have the authority to sue and be sued as any corporation would have. We're also looking at the geographic limits on page two. We had no definition of what area MetroCog actually covered. We actually cover 14 townships in North Dakota and 16 in Minnesota. That is a separate boundary. That is the council of governments boundary, which we can expand and contract at will, or at least at the pleasure of the policy board. The other boundary that you need to be aware of is our transportation planning area boundary. That defines the Metropolitan Planning Organization. That takes a lot more to change. Every 10 years, the census comes out with an urban area. The MPO boundary has to include at a minimum that area. We can expand on it, but we can't contract it. To change that boundary, we actually have to get permission from North Dakota DOT, so it would be a collaborative effort between the MPO and the DOT to get that boundary changed. But we did add language defining what each of those boundaries were. On page four, we clarified the council secretary position, or actually added that as a position to the policy board. In the past, the executive director has been charged with that responsibility. Instead of identifying the executive director, we established the council secretary position. It's a better legal standing for us as far as that goes. When we went to switch signatories on our accounts, they were always asking for the council secretary signature. We said it was just the director's signature, and we ran into a couple of snags, but I think changing that will help us in the future. On page four, there's a set of member privileges and members in good standing. These are related to the proposed separate fiscal agreement. We have to tell you what you can lose if you elect not to be part of the MPO, and we define what good standing is, which is basically the fact that you're up to date and current on all dues and assessments to the MPO. On page nine is the separate fiscal agreement, or at least the language providing for one. On pages seven and eight, we did add additional policy board powers and duties. We can hard code some of these because they won't change over time. Additional powers and duties can be added to our administrative policies, so we don't have to go back and amend the Articles per se. We can just add to that list. We had no constraints of authority. We can tell you what we can do, but this tells you what we can't do. We will do planning studies for you, corridor studies, special reports, but you're under no obligation to follow the recommendations of those course. We're not here to tell any jurisdiction how to run their government. We get into land use issues a lot. That is usually the purview of the jurisdictions. We may make suggestions, but again, you're under no obligation to actually take those suggestions. On page eight, define the fact that we can't do a tax levy. We have no authority, nor will Federal Highway allow us the authority to have one. This basically limits us to collecting our local match through donations and dues from our local jurisdictions.
Is that what M is all about here?
What M?
M on page eight.
On page eight.
To establish fees, dues, and other financials to be paid by jurisdictions to fund its operations.
Yes, I believe so.
That's what you were talking about there?
Yes.
That wasn't in there before?
It was very lightly, but it never said that we could go out and collect dues. It just said that we will collect dues. The only language that transferred from the Articles to the fiscal agreement was no jurisdiction would be responsible for more than 50% of the dues, and the dues would be split among the other jurisdictions based on population.
So is that still in effect?
That is, that's still in effect and will always be in effect. We transferred that to the fiscal agreement itself. If and when that ever changes, if Moorhead would have a population spur over the next 20 years and overtake Fargo, your responsibility is the majority.
Well, it would change.
Would change, so.
But it would be changed based on what the criteria is in the document.
Correct, and that's one reason for splitting out as a separate fiscal agreement. That's a lot easier to change than changing the Articles, so.
Thank you.
Official depository, depository, we added language that we will periodically check our banks for their rates to make sure our CDs and other things that we have invested are getting the best yield. Right now, we have Bell Federal Bank and.
Bell.
Bell and, not Brahm. Brammer, thank you. Accounts with both of those with certificates of deposit and money market certificates, so we'll be checking those about every two years to make sure that we can't get a better rate someplace else. Depository, depositaries, the policy board chair, vice chair, and the executive director all have signature rights to those accounts. When I originally went through the Articles, the one thing that hit me most was on page 11. There was no contention for withdrawal or dissolution of MetroCog. I'd hate to see us go. We do provide a very good service, but in the fact that we've become redundant or Federal Highway no longer mandates that we have a Metropolitan Planning Organization, if we would close up shop, what would happen to the assets of the organization? So we put this in to basically identify the fact that if you withdraw from the agency, you just leave on your own accord. Any assets that you had with it would stay with the agency. If we totally dissolve, after we pay back any debts that we have to Federal Highway and to the state, any remaining revenue or balances would be split among the jurisdictions based upon your participation since MetroCog's inception. So if you've been paying in 10% every year for the past 20 years or however long MetroCog's been gone, 20% of whatever remaining assets would come together, so. But hopefully, that will never have to come about, at least for 15 years. I plan to retire in about 15, so. Authority to execute counterparts, just some legal language that a friend of mine told me I should have in all kind of agreements, that you can sign on behalf of your organization, and we don't have to have one signatory sheet for everyone. We can have separate sheets and then combine them at the end to execute the contract. As I said, I kept intact probably 99% of the original content. New additions are in red, so if you are seeing the red, you're seeing the amendments and hopefully not literally aggravated at the fact that I'm here talking to you today. On the fiscal agreement itself, as I said, we really didn't have nothing in the original Articles that provided a documented procedure to collect the funds. We split it out to make it easier to amend and to change. In essence, nothing has really changed. It just has added a kind of a, I hate to say, disciplinary approach. It gives us a stick to collect the funds if necessary, basically stating that you're in good standing with the organization if you're up to date and current with your dues and any kind of special assessments. If you fail to produce those, you become not in good standing, which means you lose your voting privileges on the policy board, access to federal transportation funds that pass through our agency, and basically any of the services that we currently provide. So I think we have an update to the Clay County Comprehensive Plan scheduled for next year. We would not be doing that for you, but if we did, it would probably be three or four times as much. We'd use consultant rates instead of staff rates for that. Again, the annual dues would still be approved by our board of, our policy board, so nothing has changed there. As I stated earlier, we transferred the language that no jurisdiction will be responsible for more than 50% and that it is based on population for the rest of the jurisdictions. We did add a special assessments section. In case of emergency and emergency only and by supermajority vote of the policy board, we can assess a special assessment on the jurisdictions to pay for things that we didn't see coming. The last couple of years, we had a lot of legal fees dealing with a former employee. Those weren't budgeted for. We didn't have any way to really pay for them unless we collected additional money. North Dakota DOT worked with us to help resolve that issue, but they also said that that was a one-time thing. Something like that happens again, we need to find money locally. This would also cover the fact if the Red River rises and the second floor of the case building is flooded, if we have to move, that would be another special assessment to cover those moving costs. Hopefully, neither one will happen again. It's just one of those things that I have seen 11th hour changes to legislation or something like that that is called for emergency need for additional funds, so that was included in there as well. Default on dues payments, as I said, if you're in default, you become not in good standing. The biggest thing is you lose your voting privileges on the policy board, or at least that is the proposal. There is an appeals process included in the fiscal agreement that if that happens, you can appeal to the policy board, and during that appeals process, you would maintain your voting privileges on the policy board. But once deliberated by the policy board, their decision would be final. It is still yet to be determined whether, if you drop out, two years later, you decide that it's beneficial for you to join, if you'd have to pay back dues for those two years, or if you can just come in with a new set of dues. In previous contracts, we've noticed people jumping in and out to their pleasure, and it has been my experience that we keep that current due structure. If you drop off for two years, that to get back in, you need to pay that back. Otherwise, people just jump in and out at their convenience, and there's no penalty to them. One of my duties as the director of the agency is to make sure that we maintain that 20% match for local funds. And the only way that we can really do that is not to threaten you, because, actually, we have a couple of people in staff that are pretty mean, but for the most part, the only tools that we have is to restrict you from our services. And as much as we don't like contemplating that, or hopefully we'll never have to do it, that's the only lever that we have to make sure that we get our dues paid to meet that local match, which, in all honesty, it's a good system. For every $2 you put in, we get $8 back from the federal government, so we're leveraging that money very well. On page four, payments, that hasn't changed either. We will be sending out an estimated dues list to you here in the next month or so. We will be sending you a final list in December as far as what the cost would be to the jurisdiction. The dues would be payable by February 1st of each year or of the following year. We also provided for being able to amend the agreement, so if things do change, if we go from something other than a population-based percentage to some other scale, we can put that in with only a majority vote of the policy board. Duration and termination, this agreement would last until it doesn't. You do have the option of opting out of it. Again, that would put you in not in good standing, but in any legal contract, you always have an option out. I think you have to give 30 or 90 days notice that you're wanting to separate to give us time to try to accommodate that. Severability, if there's something in here that we can't do legally, it just says that that will be addressed, but all the other contentions in the contract would remain intact. The effective date would be that in which the policy board actually signs the fiscal agreement. It's my desire that each of the jurisdictions sign on to that, and the policy board would be the final signatory. But there are six voting member jurisdictions on the council. If five sign on and that six does not, the policy board can still act to approve the fiscal agreement, and then they would, jurisdictions would be bound to that, and the jurisdiction that didn't sign would become in not good standing by default and would lose their privileges. What does Bill want here today? Well, this is just for your review and comment. Given the fact that there are so many changes to the fiscal agreement, so many, and the fiscal agreement is a different concept altogether, I thought it prudent to go to each of the voting member jurisdictions to present the amendments and the fiscal agreement, to offer up myself and staff for any questions that you might have on anything that we're including in it, anything related to the fiscal agreement. Gives you time to run it through your legal department to make sure that we're not trying to force something that isn't doable in the states of Minnesota and North Dakota. I will eventually be back asking for your approval of the draft articles and for you to sign on as a signatory to the fiscal agreement. And with that, I will open myself up to any questions that you might have. I believe you all have my contact information. If you see something that doesn't make sense to you, give me an email or a call. I'll try to address them as much as possible. But today, just generally, any questions that you have.
Thanks.
At your disposal.
Thanks, Bill. Questions for Bill? Well, you did a good job. No questions, so.
That's always good.
No, you did a good job getting it all updated, Bill.
Yeah, that's excellent.
It will be, I have been asked what the timeframe on this is. It will take as long as it takes. I know that each jurisdiction process is faster or slower than the others. Thing is to just get it right the first time, so not coming back in six months and amending it, so hopefully, we'll pass legal muster through everyone's legal department. Hopefully, by the end of summer, we will have this approved, and I'll be back, and then we can finish up approving our policies for administration and personnel policies, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, discussion regarding the application for Minnesota Housing Finance Agency grant funds by Schuet Development. Rhonda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Colleen, you can have the middle or Brandon, either one? Okay, we are here, if you remember, we were here last year on this same time. Pretty much the same application was submitted a year ago to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency to rehabilitate the Parkview Terrace. And so we're, at that point, the funds were not secured through the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, so they're trying again. If you recall, as a part of that application process, there is, and it was submitted in your packet, a county letter of confirmation that the local human service department signs off on. So we're trying to be conscientious of how we handle these going forward, so we wanted to bring this proposal before the board, and with your approval, then I would go ahead and sign that county letter of confirmation. But we thought we would have Brandon Eisenbites, is that right? Okay, with Parkview Terrace and Colleen Murray with Lakes and Prairies, talk a little bit about the proposal, and you can answer questions. Okay.
So last year, we did apply for the tax credits, and we applied those through MHFA for low-income housing individuals. Last year, there was quite a bit of money granted, but it didn't quite get past the cities. Most of the money stayed in the cities, so we were looking to put a little different stamp onto our application again. Last year, we had come to you guys and asked for, when we applied for this, to maybe open up five households for individuals that have experienced homelessness. Now, we're going to be looking at doing the same thing, but looking at maybe opening up the need for seven apartments for individuals who have experienced homelessness. I get many calls and many applications for individuals who are homeless and need a place to stay, you know, like right now. And unfortunately, we have quite a bit of waiting list because the need in our city and just across suburban Fargo is pretty great for individuals that are 62 and older or disabled. So we have a quite lengthy waiting list, and we don't have any priority waiting lists, so when the application is received, essentially gets put down just to the bottom. So by the time I get to these individuals who are homeless, they have moved on, or they changed numbers, or you really can't find them after a period of time. So if we do set aside some places for these individuals to move into, we can get them into our building quicker instead of putting them on the waiting list and missing the opportunity to get them into our building. This year, we're also looking to renew our HUD contract, so that'd be renew the building to say that that building is designated for people that are 62 and older or disabled. We need to update the building drastically. It's from the 70s, 1977. It was built mechanically, cosmetically, everything will go in there. You know, besides the updates that we do throughout the years, you can tell some of the things are from the 70s still. So there are some drastic changes that we need to do to get that building up to date. Efficiently, energy efficient, it's not right now. We have electric everything. Lots of plans in place to get that energy efficient. This week, actually, we have MHFA, an architectural firm, coming up, so they can look at what really needs to be done to our buildings, windows, plumbing, boiler systems, and so forth, to see what we need to put into our application for this tax credits again. So from you guys, we're just looking for a letter of support that you guys can identify that the building and the services we provide there are still a need for our community here, not only in the homelessness, but also individuals that are 62 and older or disabled that need this low-income housing that can't afford the market rate rent that is around the community now. You know, they can't afford the $700, $800 for apartments, where we can make it affordable for them still at our building.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Basically, our role at Lakes and Prairies is just to provide the supportive services that go along with those seven units that are set aside for people who have experienced long-term homelessness. That's something that we do across multiple programs for about the last 15 years, including permanent supportive housing and supportive services for long-term homeless. So we'll be working within that care system, that coordinated entry system in our community to select households that meet those eligibility criteria that have been outlined in the application, and then work with them to get into their housing and work on goals to maintain and stabilize that housing. So we would provide that ongoing case management to them.
Thank you. Brian?
What is the difference between Churches United and what you guys do?
Churches United provides emergency shelter, basically, at this point. They, you know, they have a goal to build some permanent supportive housing units as well, which would be very similar to this, would also help meet the need. Lakes and Prairies focuses on taking people who have experienced homelessness and stabilizing them in rental housing in the community. Does that answer your question?
Well, it's still pretty much the same as what Churches United is doing, isn't it?
But we're focusing on a population group age-wise, right? This is focused on a population of 62 and above, and Churches United is not necessarily specific for an age.
And I would just say too, that even, you know, if all of the projects that are in the works right now got funded and we were able to build all these housing units, it wouldn't even come close to meeting the need, unfortunately. We have about 250 households at any given time that are experiencing homelessness in our community, just in Clay County, so looking at the.
Well, I definitely see the need, and I just want to.
Yeah, but it is a very similar project, other than that this project focuses on a specialized population of elderly or disabled. population of elderly or disabled.
Kevin?
Does this, does this compete with the same source of funding that Churches United is looking for, too? Is it out of the same?
Well, you know, we talked about that last year, and it is.
It is, yes. Ours is, ours is just an existing structure.
Right, I understand, but you're both, you're both going in after the same pool of money.
Correct.
That's what my question was, okay. And who owns this building?
The Schuet Companies throughout the Golden Valley, Minnesota.
So, it's a private company?
Yeah, it's a private company, where they own sixteen properties in Minnesota that they manage that are for individuals that are sixty-two and older or disabled, and they're all low-income housing.
So, how have they been in terms of doing upgrades to the facility?
Very good. Two years ago, we got the grant to do Detroit Lakes, we have a building there. Two years before that, we got the, the tax credits to do Thief River. So, they have been successful in doing some of our smaller buildings. Parkview Terrace is the largest building in our company, so it's a little bit tougher, I think, to get the funding to do such a large project.
All of those tenants that are in your building are paying rent, aren't they?
Yes.
My, the, the point being, is there, is there any investment going back in by the owners, or is it all grant money that's been asked for and, and gotten through state, the state of Minnesota?
Nope, the company does invest in everything. Just currently, right now, we're investing in the cabling and re-cabling of the building, a project to switch from Cable One to Mid-Continent. So, they do invest whenever there are projects needed, if there's not any grant money available. So, yes, they do put their own money back into it.
And how much money are you looking for? Twelve million dollars?
Twelve, twelve million altogether, looking for, you know, seven-point-three from the tax credits. The rest coming from the Schuet Companies, pretty much their investment and their investment company.
How much does, does the state have available for these kind of projects right now?
No, I don't know what they have.
I don't know the total.
Yeah.
One of the board's wishes?
Well, I, I just wanted to, that makes, so how, so how many, so we're talking about, what, what would this all fund, the seven million or twelve million? Would it, would, would all would it fund?
Remodeling of every apartment, the flooring, the cupboards, walls, paint, fixtures, the whole windows of the whole building, making it energy efficient, blocking out the walls that the cold air comes through, putting a whole new heating system in there, remodeling the community room to make it easier for the residents to get around, elevators, parking lots, so it, you know, quite a large project.
If you don't get this funding, what would happen?
If you don't get this funding, I'm not sure. That's up to the Schuet Companies to decide. I don't know what their route would be to go after if they don't get the funding. That I can't answer for you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the letter of confirmation.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do want to say that having had family members who have taken advantage of living in that building, I know it's definitely something that this community can appreciate. It launches people and helps get them in a good spot. And I, I just think any way that we can support this program, it's not new homeless people coming in, it's, it's existing, and, and I will support it however I can.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Approval of Highway Department yearly supply bids. David.
Dave. All right. On May seventh, we had a turn-in date for all of our yearly supply bids, which would include corrugated metal culverts, furnishing bituminous mixture, which is hot asphalt, rental of construction equipment, and furnishing gravel. Three of the four are pretty much just a list from which we work off throughout the year, and those would be metal culverts. We had a couple of bidders there. We've always had True Norris Steel, which used to be Johnson-Fargo Culvert, furnishing bituminous mixture. We have four different contractors there. I guess I, I didn't give everyone the full list of everything, if you want. I got, I got a whole packet of it. I did give the packet to Vicky. The rental of construction equipment, again, that's two pages full of just various equipment items that, you know, if we need a, a backhoe, or a dozer, or a truck, or something. And then, the one that we normally read as an actual bid would be the furnishing of gravel, because there's thirty different townships in Clay County, and we award those to each bidder as, depending on who's low. So, if I could just run through that real quick. Townships one through nine, the low bidder is Summit Sand and Gravel. And then, townships ten and fifteen, the low bidder is Agreed Industries. Townships number twenty and twenty-five, the low bidder is H&amp;S Contracting. And then, townships eleven through fourteen, sixteen through nineteen, twenty-one through twenty-four, and twenty-six through thirty would be Turner Sand and Gravel. And just for the public, the way it works, we start with township number one being Georgetown, township up to the northwest part of the county, and then we go across five at a time. So, it's one through five, six through ten, and it goes along like that, so. I did take a little, a good look at what we had seen historically from this year to last year, and actually, the prices for gravel have came in at or a little bit below last year's numbers, so nothing was higher. As far as the furnishing bituminous mixture there, again, all the numbers came in at or just a little bit below last year as well, so I thought that was a good sign. As we need materials throughout the year, our budgets should stay good there, so.
Questions for Dave?
You're looking for approval, right?
Yeah, we need approval on our yearly supply bids, and I guess, like I said, I only handed out the actual gravel contract. Does everyone like to see the whole packet for the future, or?
Do you have it?
I do.
I would like to.
Okay, I'll, I'll get you a copy if that's.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, you should probably see what it looks like for the first time.
I appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
I also move that we accept the gravel bids as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Dave?
I wonder, do we apply the, the entire yearly supply? Is that a second motion?
Okay. She wanted to do the gravel, so, but that's.
All right.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries.
I'd also move the, to approve the yearly supply bids and lists for all, all of the remaining materials.
Second.
And equipment.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Dave.
Morning, Dave.
Update on revenue and expenses. Lori and Brian.
Good, how are you?
Good, good to see you. Good to be seen, yes.
Same, both.
Just throwing it all away.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the commission. We do this, I should say, on a quarterly basis, but this is really a third of the year, so as you go through this, this is thirty-three percent that you're looking at, and for the accountants in the room, it's thirty-three and a third percent. You got to be exact here, those folks.
Give me some Tylenol.
So, anyway, we just, what you have before you, you may have reviewed this, but you'll see the first four columns there along the way, that is for the revenues. And we always caution you that the revenues will lag behind the thirty-three percent mark. So, if you look at the percentages over there, don't get alarmed that they're behind in their collections or something along that line, because they always do lag, it seems like. And then, the next four columns, the four columns on the right, of course, are the budgeted expenditures that this board approved, the department spent for 2015. And we can go through those kind of cautiously. Please ask any questions that you may have, but if you'll notice right out of the chute, the county commissioners at thirty-five point twenty-five, that's even pretty close to the thirty-three percent, because what happens many times is, right away, we'll pay memberships and different things that you have that are yearly memberships out of it. But, if you remember right, you did add some committees that were paying per diems on, plus you increased the per diem, and that was not budgeted for, so.
That was done after the budget.
That was done after the budget. So, you're going to run a little bit ahead this year, very possibly, if you have an accurate budget, which you should have an accurate budget, so, and the fact that it runs a little bit over, we, we expect that to happen, so that's certainly falling within the range of it. And then, as we, as we go down, you'll see most of them are, are very close to that thirty-three or below mark. If you've noticed, the technology services is at thirty-seven point three-six, which is a little high. I did ask Tim for an explanation of that, and he said that our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement contract is for a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars, and is always due the first quarter of the year, and that accounts for about seventy percent of that line item budget. So, that's going to shoot them up, and it'll even out as they go through the year. So, with that, I guess you can follow along down there, and most of the appropriated funds that you contribute money to, we will pay mostly on a quarterly basis, some on our annual basis that, that you'll see down there. You just had a presentation from Phil Christian from the Metro Cog, and you'll see down there that they're at a hundred percent, because we pay that, and the budget explanation is to be paid by the first of February every year. So, that's been paid for, for the entire year. So, I guess there's really, there's no glaring problems jumping out here at the first four months of the year, which is a very positive thing, and we'd certainly entertain any questions. That's why your fiscal officer is here as well, Lori, so we can answer any questions.
So, most of these that are either at thirty-seven or forty-six percent are because we have to pay subscriptions and memberships by the first part of the year.
Correct, we have a number of things that we pay in January or February, the whole thing, like our insurance is too.
Correct.
And so, if there is a higher number than normal, that's, that would generally be the reason.
And there's none of these that jump out at you to be out of the ordinary?
So, Mr. Chair, it's always nice to look at the, the revenues that are exceeding the thirty-three and a half percent, too. I think that's always exciting to see, and it, when it, when I see that, from the auditor's office, we have a hundred-and-sixty-two point two-eight percent of what we budgeted in revenue, what's?
That's a little misleading. We get our mortgage registration tax and state D tax.
Is that from last year?
That comes in, and we don't pay the state's portion out till the next month.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, that, right now, that's including one month of the state's portion.
Okay, so, so even though that revenue came in, we had to turn around and give some of that back?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, but it still is a pretty good chunk.
Well, it's, it's the majority of the, of the funds that come in, of the state, so.
Grounds and buildings, what, is, is that just payments from other?
Yeah, what, that's just the reimbursement that comes in.
Reimbursements from other agencies, okay. And emergency management?
Mr. Chair, if you remember.
That's grants?
Yeah, it's grants, yes, grants. You'll see the expenditures are quite high, but the revenue is, is more than covering the expenditures, so. And that's a common, that's a common practice for emergency management.
Well, I like this update for, it's a good update to have.
Everything looks good for this time of the year, so.
Yeah, we're, we're certainly comfortable with it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lori, does this go up to your office?
Thank you.
How many melanes have we spent today?
Well, we got, we can do some committee reports. Might as well get that done. Go ahead, Wayne, if you got.
Mr. Chair, I had no meetings this week.
Frank?
On Tuesday, we went highway tracking. I'm having a little bit of trouble. What we covered there, mostly the five-year plan, I think that was coming up, yeah, okay. Went over the five-year plan that we presented, okay.
And we did, at that meeting, we did talk, Jenny, about the.
Six?
Yep, six.
Highway six, yeah.
And we wanted, we wanted to make sure that Dave had that on that secondary list that we sent out, so that we can, so.
And that was, that's coming up, because I went on a meeting Wednesday night, that we discussed that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, right. Then Tuesday evening, I went to Mullen Township there, we discussed the jail. I mean, they were interested more, why are we going out to the industrial area, and we discussed that, you know, why, why we're not going out there and stuff like that.
Who, who is this with?
Mullen Township.
Oh, okay.
Ray Johnson is very interested in what's going on there.
Okay, all right.
He's very involved in, and he was concerned, they were also concerned over social services and stuff like that, about the budget and stuff like that, how that's affecting the county and stuff, so. There's a good discussion there with Mullen Township on Tuesday. Wednesday, I went to Drug Court, and I don't know if you watched TV or not that day, they featured one of the gals that graduated there, she was featured on, on TV. She, she went through quite a struggle to get through the Drug Court, but she made it, and it was a teary-eyed presentation there. It was very good. Wednesday night, they're, they're again, went to the Highway Department Open House, where Dave gave a pretty good explanation of the five-year plan, and that's where Highway Six, in fact, he's going to do some modification to it, well, Jenny was there at that one, too. They're going to try and fix up some of the, Highway Six is around three miles, but they're going to work on that first eight mile, which is really the problem.
They're going to do that within their budget.
Yeah, they're going to try and do some maintenance on that thing, because it is pretty rough right there by the swamp. There's good attendance at that meeting, too. There's a very good representation from the, from the townships there, so. And they added a couple of other things, Downer, right, and Downer, they're having problems with gravel, all, all kinds of trucks going through there, and I said, their houses are shaking, they're looking at some sort of speed restrictions probably when going through that town, so.
Going on for years. So, one thing, it's either Jake Brakes or something like that.
Yeah. Thursday, went to Glendon, they were showing off their US Highway Ten project that's going to happen in two thousand seventeen, I think, that's that one that, that's going to be working on. They're going to redo Highway Ten to Glendon. So, I went through that, and, um, had a good showing of, of people who live along that area, what's going to happen, they're going to take out some accesses to the highway and make it, put in some right-turn lanes and stuff like that, so. After that, I went to Flowing Township, and there again, we talked about the jail, we talked about gravel, township roads. They're pretty well satisfied with the maintenance of the township roads. They, they did say they'd like a little bit more grooming, and they thought the operators would slow down somewhat, you know, but they'd be very well satisfied with the maintenance of the roads there. Last night, I went to the Glendon City Council, there's a little, several presentations that are going to concern the county, they're looking at a quiet zone for the railroad, and if they put in that quiet zone, it's going to be Park Avenue will be one of them, which is a county road. County Seventeen would be another one with the gates on, so we'd probably get involved in some funding there if we're going to do there, because Park Avenue, that project's going to happen in two thousand eighteen. So, if we're going to do that project, we may have to work the quiet zone in with it. So, I think there's something where we have to get involved there. They also brought in a presentation with the, they called it the Setters Edition, it's forty-seven new lots that they want to open up, so Glendon is really doing a lot of few, a lot of things there. New water tower going in there right now, they started that project, and the water tower will be up in about four or five months. Monsanto, which is located about a half a mile, mile east of, east of Glendon, they annexed that area in there, too, and they're, so all that area's going to be part of Glendon, so. Lot of stuff going on in Glendon right now, and they're, I hope it all works out for them. It's, we got a lot of plans going on in that town. That's it to me.
Thanks, Frank. Jenny?
Last week, I was able to sit down with the Buffalo Red Watershed Chair, Van Amberg, and just have some discussions about some upcoming projects. I also went to the Highway Department meeting. There were a lot of people that. There were a lot of people that showed up, I think 20, 20-plus. There's lots of concerns about getting their own projects on that, that five-year plan, and I think most of the people there, their concerns were on that, that secondary list. I think the gravel truck traffic is, is probably something that we'll continue to hear about just as, as our eastern roads see a lot of truck, truck traffic and deterioration. I'm sure you hear about that. And the Downer Road definitely is a speed issue. I had the diversion land management meeting last week, and we, the majority of the time, we talked about the cemetery study that will be released June 8th, I believe, for public comment. It was also discussed that we should have a couple of represent, representatives from the cemetery boards to kind of serve as a voice of those, for those cemeteries. I think we have a couple people that are willing to serve, one from Minnesota and one from North Dakota, so I appreciate that. I had the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting last week, and, and they had 20,000 trees that were ordered with their tree week, so they're finishing up planting, hopefully now that it's, we got a little water, they'll, they'll grow well, I guess. One of the main concerns of the meeting was the NRCS sharing with that office space, and they're kind of in limbo. They don't know if they're going to have enough space, when their lease ends in December, so they're just trying to, to figure out where they should go next. And my other meeting got canceled, so that's it.
Thank you. Kevin?
I've had, also had the highway tracking meeting last week, and the majority of it was to go over that five-year plan. And I think we, we did spend a little bit of time and got some updates on some cost estimates for the new potential county highway shop in the eastern part of the county. And Wednesday, we had, I had the diversion public outreach meeting, which kind of focused a lot, and there was discussion on the federal judge's ruling that took place there, or right at, right at that time. And I wanted to get to that five-year, I wanted to get to the highway meeting Wednesday night, but I had a conflict with that. And I also had a conflict and couldn't make the diversion authority meeting Thursday, so I think Brian's going to give a report on that. I did want to ask, Frank asked you a question. You've been to several township meetings, and the discussion of the jail has come up. And do you think it would be worthwhile for us to prepare a presentation, maybe get all the townships together and give them a presentation out, or that, are they that interested in what's going on and get, to give them a good update? I would say that it would probably be a couple, maybe a month or two down the road so we can start getting into the?
Well, I'm going to, I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing that, and I think that's a great idea because they are very interested in what is going on in that jail, you know?
Okay.
They all seem to know about it and stuff, you know?
Right.
But I'm hitting 15, I've got 15 townships in my area, and I'm talking to all of them about it, so.
I just didn't know if you felt that they needed more information, or if they want it, if they want, if they felt they'd be more involved, if we invited them to a special meeting regarding the jail issue.
Probably would be, because I know, like I said, when I was in Mullen, they, they were very, I mean, Ray Johnson out there is very interested in what's going on in the counties, they're very, not that the other commissioners that weren't, I mean, or township officers were, you know, but.
Right.
They got an interest in what's going on in the county, and I think the more we tell them about it, the, the better it is.
Right. I agree.
I think this jail thing's a big thing, and I think people have to be notified what's going on about it, and that's, that's what I'm doing, you know? I'm trying to let them know about it, but if we do a, a county thing, I think it'd be great.
And I, you know, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to do it prematurely either, too.
No.
We want to have good information for, for them to do that.
When is their next meeting scheduled going on?
Well, they have one in the fall now, and they have one September is the annual, you know, the semi-annual meeting. That might be okay to, that might be okay to wait till then, too.
I think it would be appropriate, definitely.
To give a good update at that one.
I guess it all depends how you look at it. Do you want to bring just the township officers in, or you're going to invite the residents of Clay County in, you know, so?
Well, that, that one, that one.
I mean, that township meeting is just.
That one will, will come, too.
Yeah.
You know, but I, but I think the, anytime we can keep all of the elected leaders, whether from the township level or city levels, involved with, this is a huge project, and it's a, it's probably going to be probably the biggest capital project Clay County is going to be doing in a long time, so.
Well, I, I agree with that, and that's why I'm going out there and I'm talking to people about it.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just wanted to follow up and make sure that, are they getting the information they need for now?
Wayne?
Yeah. Kevin, going back to your comment regarding the federal judge's ruling, would you like to expand on that at this time or rather not?
Expand how?
What the possible impact could be?
Well, I, it's a, it's a temporary injunction. Until, until the Minnesota DNR comes to. My biggest, my biggest issue is that the Minnesota DNR follows up with their own rules and regulations on how long they take to, to do these things. They, they have their own regulations as to when something is supposed to be completed from the time that it's applied for and goes on, and, and they're already.
Past that?
Past that in, in this, in this process. And so that frustrates me as to how long could they carry this out? Could this go on for 10 years, 20 years, and, and just say they're not done yet? So, and then we're funding it, too. But that's, that's as far as I've been commenting on it, so.
Anything else on your reports, Kevin?
No.
Okay, let's see. I had Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting and update on all the various things they've got going, and I had Land of the Dancing Sky. We sponsored the White House Conference on Aging at the MCOS last week, and we had discussions on healthy aging, retirement security, long-term care, and elder justice, and, and then all the information that was compiled is sent to the state, and then that's compiled and it goes to Washington, so, and I'm sure there'll be action on it late most things, so. And then I had a Land of the Dancing Sky meeting in Fergus Falls yesterday, our Joint Powers Board meeting, and I think I discussed this earlier, but we did vote yesterday to dissolve our Joint Powers Board, and we're going to go with one organization instead of three districts like we have now. It won't have any impact on services. And the people that we have in Fergus Falls are retiring this year, so it's just good timing, the way it's going to work out, and it'll go into effect. We'll have an agreement for our attorneys to look over sometime in the near future. And let's see, that was it, other than I listened to the news this morning, and I see St. Paul didn't get anything accomplished again, and they're blaming each other, so partisan politics are alive and well in Minnesota, so. That's it. Okay, we've got a closed session, so. Brian can do his after, we're done with that, so. We'll have the closed session first, then your report after that, so.
Need a motion?
Yeah, go ahead. We'll take a five-minute break.
Okay, great.
Okay. Your report, Brian?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Highway Tracking intended that, that has been discussed. There was the two items, and they've both been addressed. Tim Magnuson and I had an appointment with, with a land use issue with, with the citizen after the last board meeting. I had some highway personnel issues that we've been continuing to work on. And there was talk a little bit, Kevin Kastenberg from Soil and Water talked to me about their office movement, that they're, they have to make some decisions in regards to their location and how that'll work out, so we have a meeting scheduled with him this afternoon. And Tim and Mark from GIS and Technology Services, that's their biggest concern, if they do relocate, can they get some guidance? And we told them we'd certainly meet with him and talk about that available time with our staff. We had a meeting with the Sheriff's Office and Solid Waste referenced that state bonding submittal. We talked about that with you at the last board meeting, and so we had a formal meeting in regards to that, and, and that's going along quite well. It's a lot of paperwork, and we haven't submitted that before, so. I attended that five-year capital plan of a highway. I thought it went really well as well. It was, it was good feedback, good input. Got a little off on highway for a while and got into the enforcement of speeds and different things through Downer, which, which talked quite a bit about it, but I guess it was related to the roads. We had a presentation at the chamber, I'm on the Public Affairs Committee over there, and had another, oh, presentation referenced gang activity in the Fargo-Moorhead area, and most of you have seen some of that. So it was more of the same with the two chiefs of police from Moorhead and Fargo. I attended the land management meeting, and Commissioner Mujo had talked about that, and that was in regards to the cemetery issues. And you have, one of the handouts that I gave you addressed some of those cemetery issues and the protection on it, and I, I think that kind of the general consensus was from the report is that mitigation is probably to do cleanup and things after affected areas, but they also agreed that they're still open for some negotiations on a small berm or something along those lines. So this was a study and a report, but it seemed like it was a pretty complete study. So that's what occurred in the land management meeting. And then we had the diversion meeting later on that afternoon. And you have a single sheet that kind of, it, it was, it was from the news report, which I think is pretty accurate on it, and it says that the diversion authority attorney assertion that the injunction does not pertain to house construction in Oxbow, and I think, Commissioner Ingsall, you asked, what does the injunction entail? It, it's the opinion of the, the attorney that it's to stop the ring dyke around Oxbow Hickson Baki, but that's all it does. It doesn't stop the building of the homes out there or the, the development of it, and nothing within the city of Fargo for the protection. So it's just the ring levee around Oxbow Hickson that stops. And then the other item on that single sheet was the formation of the Dakota Metro Flood Board. And what that is, it's the North Dakota's entities of the diversion authority will then be the ones that pass a motion for the budgeting and paying the bills. And that's one of your sheets that I handed out, too, that has been formed so that the Dakota Metro Flood Authority will approve the bills after they have gone through in consideration at the Board of Authority. And it's, that's a legal technicality, I should say. And then the thicker document that I handed out is a Chad Peterson, who is a Clay County Commissioner.
No.
In fact, sorry, Cass County Commissioner, in fact, he's chair of the board, gave this presentation, and I think it's been given before, but it's all of the economic impacts of a flood on the Fargo-Moorhead area, and also of where the employees come from that, that are employed on both sides of the river, and the counties that they come from on North Dakota and Minnesota, and it's a pretty, pretty informational document that you can go through at your leisure. And then the last item on that was just what the diversion authority has spent so far. And the total expenditures are $103 million so far on different projects. And I attended the police memorial service over at Lindenwood Park on Friday at noon. So that was Police Memorial Day, May 15th, and I think it was, what do we have? How many, 135 officers that were killed last year, or something like that? It's extensive.
Seven million. Something, I thought it was more than that.
Way too many? Was it 165, maybe 70, something like that? It was way too many, that's for sure. And, Mr. Chair, that completes my report.
Anything else? Last chance.